Good morning and welcome to Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, April 4th, 2006, and we are being broadcast live on Channel 35, LA City View, your city channel. We're also webcast on www.lacity.org, our city's homepage, where there's a wealth of information about elected officials, the business of the city council, and our great city departments. We also are available to be listened to by Council Phone, which is 213-621-CITY, which can be used to call in to listen to the meetings of the city council and also to the committee meetings of the Los Angeles City Council as well. Today is Tuesday, April 4th, as I mentioned. We do have a presentation, but before that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Cardinals, Grill, Han, Weezer, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenell, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present and a core, Mr. President.
Thank you. Just one announcement before we start, colleagues, and for members of the public, we of course welcome public comment, and we have a time that is scheduled for, and it's part of every regular meeting that we have. We also invite folks to come down to our Van Nuys City Hall, where they can testify via remote to the city council, and they don't have to drive on a rainy day like this all the way down to City Hall, and we're working on that capacity other parts of the city. So I would just remind folks, we have a presentation today. Before that, we'll do our customary salute to the flag, but I would ask folks, please to maintain order while we're doing the presentation, and we have public comment as a fitting and proper place as well for people to exercise their First Amendment rights, so just wanted to give that reminder. And with that, if I could please ask everybody in chambers to rise, and Mr. Weezer, if you would lead us in the salute to the flag.
Put your hand up your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer. All right. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Approval of the minutes.
Okay. Mr. Garcetti moves. Councilmember Han seconds. Commendatory resolutions, I'm sorry. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Weezer moves. Mr. Parks seconds.
Madam President, you wish to take a public comment at this time, on items not on council's agenda?
If the presentation is not ready to move, okay, the presentation is ready to move, if you don't mind that Mr. President would like to move ahead with the presentation at this time, we'll take the presentation first, and then go to public comment. Okay. Are we ready to proceed with the presentation? You ready? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. This is the time for presentations. You will be afforded the opportunity to exercise your First Amendment rights during the public comment period. If you cannot refrain at this time, I will have to ask security to clear the chambers to allow the presentation to proceed. I have to request that the chambers be cleared so the presentation can move forward.
Thank you very much, Madam President. We love Los Angeles because there's always a crashing together of all sorts of issues. I would reiterate my call, I know that we have folks that are here from our employees, our Engineers and Architects Association.
I need to call the chamber to order, please.
But if we can call the chambers to order...
Excuse me, Mr. President, for one second. I again would like to call the chamber to order, I'll have to request that the chamber be cleared so the presentation can proceed. There is an opportunity for you to exercise your First Amendment rights during the public comment period, so again, as a matter of respect, I will have to ask that you refrain at this time, and please, exercise your First Amendment rights during the public comment period to allow the presentation to proceed, or else, or I will have to request that you be ushered out of the chamber at this time. Mr. President, Mr. President. Mr. President. Mr. President, would you like to proceed now? Okay, Mr. President. I think you're good to go now. Thank you very much, and for those who are on the sides of the horseshoe, and those who are willing to keep their voices down so that the presentation can proceed, I would ask you to do that at this time, so that the presentation can proceed. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We're almost there, Madam President. I want to thank everybody for their patience, everybody for exercising their First Amendment rights. We're very excited that some of this coverage will be on the bonus section of the DVD for Crash. Not many DVDs that have stuff like that on them. I want to welcome everybody here to a very special presentation, something that's very important not only to this august body as the city council, but also something very important to our city, the city of Los Angeles. We have a mayor in many ways that has put Los Angeles back on the map, but we also had a movie this past year that put Los Angeles back on the map, and asked us to engage in the very conversations we see echoed here in real life, the crashing together of opinions, of ideas, of cultures, and of people, in the movie that's called Crash. So I'll keep my comments short for a moment, I'll say a few more words, but I'd like to at this time introduce the former council member from the 14th District, now mayor of the city of Los Angeles. Please give a warm welcome to Antonio Villarosa.
I want to thank the council member, Council President Derek Garcetti, for allowing us to come here. I know that on the regular course of business, it's on Friday that we have these kinds of resolutions, I thank you for that, and it's fitting, because you represent Hollywood along with Tom Labange, and nobody has been more supportive of this industry, more supportive of the revitalization of Hollywood, and you're at every single star, you know, on the sidewalk event, and we thank you for allowing us to be here, because this isn't just a celebration of the Academy Award-winning Best Picture crash, it's also a celebration of film in Los Angeles, a celebration of the jobs that are created when people work in this, the entertainment and cultural capital, not just of America, but of the world. It's an honor and pleasure to welcome to City Hall today Screenwriter and Director Paul Haggis, John Feltheimer, the CEO of Lionsgate, Kathy Schulman, Bobby Maresco, and all of the other members of the cast and the crew and the executives with both Lionsgate and Crash. In honor of their Academy Award-winning work and in recognition of L.A.'s standing as the creative and cultural capital of the world, today we proclaim April 4th as Crash Film L.A. Day in the city of Los Angeles. As I said, we do so to honor this film. I agree with you, Council President Garcetti and Councilmember Han said the same thing. I think it's important for us to talk about race and ethnicity and the tensions that we have in this, the most diverse city anywhere in the United States of America, maybe anywhere in the world. I've said for many years that people talk about it all the time, they just talk about it intra-group and not inter-group, and this movie, which was important, because it talked about the tensions, but it also talked about the good in all of us. Every one of those characters had a side to them that wanted to reach out, that wanted to understand, that wanted to kind of connect, and did connect, and that's what I love so much about this movie. And my legal counsel who's here, Mr. Zineza, wasn't a big fan of the movie, and that's what's great about art. You know, art creates, you know, discussion, it spurs conversation, it makes us think, and, you know, at the end of a long day, a lot of you know, if you've been reading in the, some of these people follow me on the net, and they see me falling asleep at movies, I did not fall asleep at Crash. I did not fall asleep at Crash, saw it three times, but I can tell you that I love film, precisely because it does do that. It's a reflection of our culture, it's an opportunity for us to talk about big issues and just to be entertained, and so we're really excited that Crash won the Best Picture. You should know that scenes of Crash were shot right here in City Hall, by the way, and that's why as we move this proposal along that says we're gonna support film in Los Angeles and allow our filmmakers to film for free on city property here in City Hall and throughout the city, we do so because we know how important it is to be here, to see the symbols that is City Hall, it's a landmark and an icon for people all over the world. It also fuels our local economy and was part of the $25 billion annual impact the industry has right here in Los Angeles. And so today we want to thank Paul Haggis and acknowledge, you never leave empty-handed when you come here. This was signed by the entire council, by the way, Paul. And if you didn't know it, Paul was also the writer for Million Dollar Baby, and as I understand it, because he wrote this with Bobby Maresco and directed this, but the only writer to be a part of two best films, two best pictures, two years running, so that's great. Paul and I got to meet each other because the film generated so much controversy, we were on national news, I was on national news, because I said I liked it, and people thought, why, said, why would the mayor like a movie that was critical of L.A.? And one of the things I said was, it was filmed in L.A., but it could easily have been filmed in New York, or Chicago, or Detroit, because, believe me, conflict is not endemic just to this city, it's all over the country and the world as we know, and in fact, I think in this city, we deal with it better than anybody. So on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, we want to congratulate you for two Best Film Oscar wins in consecutive years for filming this movie here in City Hall and here in the city of Los Angeles entirely, by the way. I think it's one of the few best pictures in the last five or six years that was filmed entirely in Los Angeles, so we thank you, we're gonna bring more back here, and thank you all so much, congratulations.
A little lower.
And can you look over this way for me, please? And all, this way, please?
Center, we're gonna get there.
Okay. And this way for me, right here for me? Thank you.
This kind of feels like the Academy Awards, you even have the mayor thanking his lawyer. I wanted to just say briefly that it was a great joy, this year's Academy Awards, I think I was sitting just behind some of the folks who made Crash, because the moment that that was announced, the row right in front of me went nuts, and it was, that was your father, that was your father. It was incredibly exciting, I too was somebody who very, very much enjoyed this film and kind of don't understand some of the controversy back and forth on it, and I think the audience and the popularity of it and the critical claims speaks for itself. Here is a city in which we literally do collide with one another, and the cultural centers at Los Angeles is, we're not only the creative capital of the world as expressed by the production of this film and so many films here, we're also the cultural capital of the world, in which we are a center for Persian culture, a center for Guatemalan culture, a center for Chinese culture, a center for Korean culture, a center for over 20 different countries, it's either the most significant city outside of those countries, or in some cases, the second-largest city in the world, for instance, the second-largest city in the world of people of Mexican descent is right here in Los Angeles. And this film shows that those collisions lead to what we all look for in our own lives, meaning to work through some of the most difficult issues we have in order to find greater understanding, not only between each other, but within ourselves. So I want to congratulate... So I want to congratulate all of the makers of the film, the actors of the film, the people behind the cameras, and then the jobs that this film helped create. And even this DVD release today is something that will continue to bring jobs and financing back to Los Angeles to continue that tradition. So with that, we have, I think, one more certificate to present to Lionsgate, and we want to thank them. This is a truly independent film that won Best Picture, which in itself was quite an accomplishment, but without companies like Lionsgate that believe in Los Angeles and believe in the people of Los Angeles and believe in the economy of Los Angeles, we wouldn't all be here today. So let's give them a round of applause and congratulate them as well.
Thank you, Council President Garcetti. You said it, Lionsgate is the leading independent film entertainment studio in the world, a company noted for its boldness, creativity, and innovation, and whose brand is synonymous with original, daring, quality entertainment. And I can tell you that John Feltheimer and all of the executives there took a risk with this film. There were a lot of people that said, "This just wouldn't make it." It did, became the Best Picture. That's the entrepreneurial spirit that is entertainment and especially independent filmmaking. And we're very, very thankful that you all did this here in Los Angeles, that you had the courage to dream and to think that this was possible, and that I think this movie not only won Best Picture, but has been a real catalyst for conversation about an issue that's so important in our city and our nation. So on behalf of the City Council and the city of Los Angeles, I'd like to present this proclamation to you as well.
I thought it was difficult to be a studio head, but as I watched this demonstration this morning, I guess it's probably harder to be the mayor of this city. I understand, actually, Chief Bratton was supposed to be here as well, but given the weather, I guess he's probably dealing with a couple of crash moments himself today. But seriously, it's a great honor to accept this on behalf of all of our Lionsgate employees, a number of whom are here today. But we weren't the first people to the crash party. We were smart enough to acquire the film, and I think we did a pretty good job distributing it, marketing it, and creating a national dialogue. But I really would like to thank today all of the people who were there at the beginning. We've got a number of the actors who were in the cast, and this was an incredible ensemble. We actually won the SAG Award for Best Ensemble, and I really believe that each and every one of these actors could have been nominated for an Oscar as well. I also want to thank Bob Yari, who was there at the very beginning, he put his money on the line, he financed this picture, and without him, it's possible that the picture would not have been made. So thank you, Bob. We've got a number of the producers, a number of the producers are here today, Kathy Schulman, I believe Mark Harris is here, Bobby Maresco, of course, who was the co-writer of the script, and I thank all of you, but particularly Paul Haggas, whom I've known for more years than I want to admit here, the writer, the producer, the director, really an amazing job of turning his own personal crash moment into this really special film that we're just so proud of. And I do want to mention, that takes a lot of people to create a dialogue like we've had on this film, and both the mayor and Chief Bratton, I think right from the beginning, were early supporters of the film, helped to create that dialogue, and so today, all of us at Lionsgate want to make both of them actually honorary Lionsgate marketing executives. I think it's a good job, by the way.
Film in L.A., baby.
Seriously. Thank you so much for making today Crash Day, it's really special. I hope this will just be one of the many days that we can help bring the community together a little bit, and I thank all of you for being here as well. Thank you.
Yes, before we proceed, I believe we have two council members who would like to say a few words, Ms. Han and then Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I just wanted to rise and congratulate, first of all, our mayor and Councilwoman Garcetti for allowing us to all celebrate Crash Day in Los Angeles. And I really wanted to congratulate all those who were involved in making this movie. And I said it up there, you didn't believe it, but I loved this movie, the first time I saw it, a long time ago, before everyone else loved this movie. I knew that this movie was going to be an important movie, and I was actually rooting for this movie to win Best Picture, because it was so meaningful to me personally. First, I loved it that was filmed in L.A. And for those of you who don't know, you probably do, but the final climax crash where Matt Dillon rescues Thandie Newton was filmed in San Pedro. So everyone in the Harbor area was very excited to see that that great moment of that film was filmed in my hometown of San Pedro. Anyway, it was a beautiful movie. You know, Oprah Winfrey was, on her show, had the whole cast of Crash, and at that moment, again, that was like a year ago, she said, "I want to stand on every corner in America with a sign that says, 'Go see Crash.'" She felt that it was that important of a movie, and there were a lot of lessons to be learned. For me, it was about how you never realize how you treat someone, what you say to someone, whether they come to your house to fix something, or whether you run into them in a store, that it is a ripple effect, and so that we need to be very aware of how we speak to people, how we treat to people, because everything that goes around comes around. And it was a great movie, congratulations to all of you. I think it made L.A. very proud.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Ms. Perry, and I just was able to rush in. I went from the Valley to the West Side to downtown this morning, so I've been on every freeway. But I have to thank EAA for having their demonstration, because I was listening on the phone hoping I'd get here in time this morning. But I'm so pleased to be here, and Paul and I had a chance to meet about a week, a week or so ago at a dinner at the Consul General's home to talk about Crash, and we sat around a table and talked about its impact in the city of Los Angeles. And I think, as Mr. Garcetti and our mayor mentioned earlier, controversy and art and discussion is important, and that's what this film did. And it had, I think, as I said earlier as well, that it could have been anywhere in this country where we see those kinds of impacts. And I agree with you, Janice, that everyone should see Crash, and today they can, if they haven't seen it already, or have, they can buy the DVD. And I came from the entertainment business, so I know how important that part of it is. But it's just a great pleasure to see so many of you here today. And we do believe that the entertainment industry is in Los Angeles, and I say frequently that we would not let, in New York, they would not let Wall Street leave New York. Well, we're not going to let Hollywood leave Los Angeles, and that's why this is so important to have. And this council has gone on record supporting filming in Los Angeles, as the mayor said, and we're looking at even more ways in which we can encourage people to stay here in the city of Los Angeles. And today, we have an item, and like a plug, AB-777, which Fabian Nunez has in the state, which allows us to provide some additional incentives. We are voting today, I think probably unanimously, to go on record supporting AB-777 here in the city of Los Angeles. But just a special thank you to all of you that made it possible. This is a great day in Los Angeles, and thank you for being here today. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Does that conclude your presentation?
I want to thank you all so much, and again, to everybody at Lionsgate and who are part of the Crash film. This is a great day for all of you, obviously, but it's a great day for us, because in no small measure, L.A., I think, is a better place by the discussion that's occurred, and we hope it'll continue to occur as people buy those DVDs. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President.
And last but not least, let's hear from the creative genius behind it. Please welcome Mr. Paul Haggas.
I just want to briefly say thank you to the mayor, thank you to the president, thank you for the council, this is a great honor. I mean, I really would urge you to do absolutely everything you can to help keep filming here in Los Angeles. The mayor's talked to me about some of the things he's doing. It was, ours was a very small film, it was very difficult to shoot it here, and in fact, we could have got the film financed a year before, if only we were shot in Canada or anyplace else, but we all insisted that it needed to be shot here, because it was about Los Angeles, means we wanted to do it here, but it did take us an extra year to shoot the film, because we wanted to shoot it here. So anything you can do, even in small ways, it all adds up. So thank you. And just about the impact of the film, I do understand, you know, why some people really hate this film, and then probably some people do it for real reasons, but why it's so controversial? It's many reasons. One of the reasons is that we don't like to believe that we are bad people. We all like to believe we're good in our hearts, and in the right situation, we'd always do the right thing. And so I think the film helped, because I wanted to write a film, and Bobby wanted to write a film, about us, about good people who are put into very difficult situations and sometimes do things they wish they wouldn't or hadn't, and sometimes say things they wish they hadn't at those wrong moments. So it's, I guess what I'm saying is that it's, I don't know what the heck I'm saying, other than the fact that, you know, I was very proud to be a part of something that started the discussion and made it a little more complex than, "Oh, those bad racists over there and those good people over here," so that we could say, "These are who we are as human beings." So I'm very proud to have been part of it. Thank you, I want to thank especially Mark Harris, Larry Becksey, for in the beginning championing this and pushing it along, and Lionsgate and everyone for getting behind it. But thank you so much for this great, great day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, I think this is the time for public comment. Once the podium is cleared, I would like to call forward Mr. Robert Carvajal. Mr. Carvajal, you may proceed, please.
Good morning, Ms. Perry. I'd like to speak about the housing situation downtown, Skid Row Housing Trust, and Shelter Plask Care, they provide down at the downtown hotels. They're funded through the HUD, directly through the Housing Authority, and in the past nine months, I have developed a webpage, you know, basically a blog of a lot of negative encounters that I've had there. I got the place because somebody could not speak English, and since I could, I got the place at the Simone. I immediately complained to the Skid Row Housing Trust, to the Housing Authority, and I found out later, these people don't take complaints. These people just sweep them under the rug or file them away, but no complaint is ever actually formally made. Took me months before I found out it has to be done through HUD. I have an investigation now into the racism, the selling of drugs, the beating of people, the cover-ups, the forced perjury, the payoffs of people who purge themselves against other tenants, one of your friends, Yvette Nelson, and her drug-dealing friend Angela, Sonny who runs the Simone Hotel, Mr. Mike Alvidres, Mike Fender, Rebecca Rush at the Housing Authority, Ms. Gillette. Basically, everybody, everybody that should be helping, the NSA and the homeless, is basically abandoning them, it's just a conglomeration of different little organizations that have nothing to do with each other, not even Commissioner Katz or Lassa really know who's in charge of that. And what I was hoping to propose is a starting of a task force, sort of like Homeland Security, where everybody is brought together and everybody can get their heads together, exactly what is needed to be addressed as far as this goes. And as for the Crash film, I have a website, Yahoo group called Injustice for None, that speaks to the racism. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dele Aliman? Alimen? Dele, or Dele Aliman? Mr. Dele Aliman, for the Coalition for a Greener L.A. Want to make sure that you had the opportunity to speak. All right. The next person to be called, Mr. Zuma Dogg. Zuma Dogg, from Venice Beach Artists. Mr. Zuma Dogg. Mr. Nader Tashakko. It's quite possible that the front door to the chamber is blocked at this time. If necessary, we may have to hold a second public comment. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Madam President, before beginning the agenda, there is an item that has been requested to be continued, item number 10. There's a request from councilmembers, I want to continue that matter to April 26th.
Without objection, move that item.
Next item, that would leave before council, items one through nine, these have had public hearings in committee. Item number one is confirmation to Affordable Housing Commission, and the report has been submitted and distributed to councilmembers. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Are there any specials before us, colleagues? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, and then close the roll.
Fourteen eyes.
Tabulate the vote, sorry.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 11 through 23, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Any specials? Okay. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Next order of business. Fourth with, there's been a request for 19 to go forth with.
Next items on the supplemental agenda are also items for which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, I can't hear. I can't, I'm sorry, I can't hear.
I'm sorry, that's items 24 through 26.
Any specials, colleagues?
24.
Okay, Mr. Parks is called 24 Special. Any other specials? Please, oh, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the remaining items. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That would take council back to item number one, and this is confirmation of Ms. Stephanie Kloski-Gamer to the Affordable Housing Commission. HCED report has been submitted and distributed to the councilmembers.
I believe the hearing was held this morning in committee, Housing Committee, on your nomination, and you received a favorable response. I'd like to ask the committee chair if he'd like to add a few comments before we give you the opportunity to talk about your background.
Thank you, Madam President and members. Just a few hours ago, we had an opportunity to have a very, I think, positive and detailed discussion with Ms. Gamer. She made us all feel excited where it relates to her commitment, and I just simply urge that this concurrence be unanimous, and that she's the type of, will bring the type of leadership and varied background and the creativity that we need to this job, and I believe her to be a leader and not a follower, and I thank her very much for giving her time to the city of Los Angeles. her time to the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. Would you share with the council your unique qualifications for this commission appointment?
Yes, thank you, and thank you for the honor of being here this morning. I've been involved in affordable housing for the past 15 years, really beginning working for the city, for the L.A. Housing Department and its policy, and then spent the past 12 years as a developer and a lender to affordable housing, and I look forward to bringing that experience and my both personal and professional commitment to community development and affordable housing development specifically to the Affordable Housing Commission.
Thank you very much, and Mr. Wesson said we're all proud to support you today in council and committee. So with that, if nobody else wishes to be heard, Madam Clerk, if you'll please prepare the roll and the nomination, and please tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Congratulations, Commissioner, and welcome aboard. Please give a round of applause, everybody. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number 24, and that was called special by council member Parks.
Mr. Parks, item 24.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's our general manager personnel department to come up. Basically, what we have today is a report that came out of the discussion and debate as to the removal of Gordon Stuckey. And what we asked Personnel Department is to go back and come back with a report to advise us of all of the processes in the city charter that tells us what rules each general manager is under so that we'd have it as a reference for the future. And also, there was discussion as to how do other major cities deal with these appointments, and that's also part of the report. So I'm going to ask Maggie to go through this. If there are questions and issues you'd like to expand, certainly they're able to answer those questions, but if it's beyond what we can answer today, the expectation it would go back to Personnel Committee, and they would work out what other new information is now requested. So Maggie, why don't you take us through this?
Thank you. Good morning, council members. On January 13th, while appearing for the council and executive session, council member Parks raised a number of issues, as did other council members, regarding the status of general managers and their tenure. The report before you is a response to those questions. Overall, the Personnel Department's findings mirror those of the city attorney, which is that all general managers are at-will employees. The majority of general managers serve at the pleasure of the mayor, who has the sole removal authority. The removed general manager has a limited appeal right to the city council, and such appeal is made after the action has been taken. The removed general manager must initiate the appeal within 10 calendar days. The council has jurisdiction over the matter for 10 council meeting days, and reinstatement would require a two-thirds vote. The author of this report is Steve Pressburg, and he is with me, and we are both available to answer any questions, but Steve is going to address some of the exceptions in the charter as it relates to certain general managers.
With respect to the three proprietary departments, Airport, Harbor, and Water and Power, as well as the retirement systems, the mayor is not the removal authority. Instead, it's the board, and only the board can initiate that removal. And if the removal is initiated by those particular boards to remove the general manager, there must be a mayoral confirmation of that, a mayoral approval of it, and at that point, that's when the removal happens. It would be the same situation as in all other departments if the mayor simply sought to remove the general manager. But now, in these cases, there must be first action by the board and then the mayor, and at that point, the same appeal right kicks in, and that removed general manager, like any other removed general manager, has a limited amount of time to appeal to this body for reinstatement.
Are there any questions?
Any other questions? Mr. Parks, I believe, has a couple more, and then Mr...we still have Mr. Parks' time, but then Mr. Zion will be our next speaker.
Let me just ask, you've laid out and answered all the questions. In fact, I have to apologize. Did you go through the question that dealt with the other cities that was of interest?
Yes.
Okay. So we've covered that as far as what New York or Chicago and other major cities do?
Yeah. The city of Los Angeles, the number of exempt appointments in the city of Los Angeles is minuscule as compared to Chicago and New York.
That's one thing I wanted you to cover, is giving the view from other cities and then also what the number of exempt positions that they may have versus what the city has.
Yes. I'm sorry, which...the question was with respect to removal of...
As far as what the exempt positions and serving at the pleasure.
Well, to take the latter part first, in New York and in Chicago, there is no appeal. The mayor has sole removal power for department heads. In Chicago, council confirmation is required for their appointment, but not for their removal. In New York, there's no council involvement in either the appointment or the removal. In terms of the exempt positions, New York's workforce is approximately 15% exempt, and Chicago's is approximately 10% exempt, and our calculations in the Personnel Department tell us that our workforce here is approximately 3/4 of a percent exempt.
So we're less than 1%?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. The other issue is that, in references that you've identified, is that there are certain exceptions as it relates to or categories that you've placed them in. Could you go through that just quickly as to the different categories of general managers? That some are by commission appointment, some are by the mayor, and just kind of give everyone a kind of a thumbnail of what general manager you're referring to?
The largest category, of course, are...the vast majority of general managers are appointed by the mayor, and of course, here require council confirmation, but for the positions as general manager of the Departments of Water and Power, Airport and Harbor, and the retirement systems, the board must make that appointment. And for the Ethics Commission, it is the Ethics Board that must make that appointment.
And then also, what information is placed as we go out and seek new general managers in the material so they'll know what the rules are while they're applying? I think that was another issue that came up.
And as far as the publications that we send out when we're recruiting, we have language that will be included on the publications, letting them know that their appointments will be at-will.
Now, is that something in addition to what we've been doing, or is that what we've always been doing?
You know, I don't want to say we've always done it. I know that we have done it in certain instances, and we will do it in all instances in the future.
All right. The other thing I think that came up in the discussion is the issue, is it individual, position by position, where moving costs are added to the negotiation, or is that something that is done for all general managers that live out of state? Or how does that work?
That's issue by issue.
Position by position?
Right.
Is that in the application for the position, or is that in the negotiation once a person's selected?
Negotiation.
Okay. Thank you very much. Colleagues, I would just say that this is probably the best reference that when these issues come up that we can refer to, and thank you, Maggie, for the in-depth analysis that clarified so many things that came up during the Stuckey hearings and such, of knowing what the council's powers are and what the charter allows us to do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. I would like to have this taken to Personnel Committee to see if some modifications are in order, to see if we need to make some changes to the charter or some other procedures, because I hear that we have procedures in place, but it seems that oftentimes, while those procedures are in place, something else takes place, something else happens. And to have an at-will general manager that is at the mayor's pleasure to serve, confirmed by the council, and then the appeal process, somehow, it doesn't seem to work as smooth as it should. So what I like to do, Mr. President, is to have this matter taken to the Personnel Committee where we can discuss it in detail and find out if there's any suggestions that we make some modifications, whether it has to be a charter change or something else, so we can avoid the problems that we've seen under this charter. And I know that, being former Charter Commissioner, we thought this would be the perfect charter for the next millennium, but obviously, we've had some problems and some modifications are in order. So we can have a lengthy discussion and find out from the personnel position, find out from general managers, find out from the mayor's office, from council, if it's appropriate that we make some recommendations to have...leave it as it is or to make some changes. I was troubled by the latest situation with the General Management Services, how we went through that ordeal over and over and over, and how that could have been avoided in the future. Mayors come and go, council members come and go, but we need to have a policy that is going to be adhered to, and it won't be open for litigation, it won't be open for settlements on the side or for whatever the case may be. So with your indulgence, Mr. President, colleagues, I'd like to take it to Personnel Committee and challenge that and see if we can come up with something to make sure we have everything that we need, and if we need to make changes at the appropriate time, bring those back to the council, to the mayor, and to the city of Los Angeles, to the people.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal wants to speak first, and then Mr. Parks, and then we'll take up the proposal.
I certainly want to support my colleague Dennis Seines, and it's a good thing to bring it to the committee, which would be great, and we really get a sense to flush it out. Just a couple of quick questions. How many general managers are there that serve at-will?
About 42.
Forty-two?
Right.
How many general managers do we have altogether?
Forty-two.
So all 42 serve at-will?
That's right.
And they all serve at the will of the mayor?
That's right, except for those exceptions that Mr. Pressburg mentioned.
When the mayor appoints somebody, are there any situations where he has the opportunity to say there'd be a severance package, or there'd be this or that, or is there flexibility or none, or how does that work within that context?
Well, the mayor would certainly not be in a position to assure any appointee of anything along those lines, any more than the city council could at such a moment of appointment. Frankly, there should be no expectation on the part of an appointee of any such thing. Now, that the mayor and the council can together decide to do that, of course, is always the case.
In some private sector situations, one year of service, you can get one week severance. There's no formulas or relationships like that. At-will truly means pack your bags.
That's correct.
Okay. Unfortunately, that wasn't the case that we went through with that situation a month ago, and I appreciate you on the record saying it. I look forward to Mr. Seines' thorough analysis of it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree, Mr. Seines, that it goes to committee. One thing I'd ask you to look at, and it's something that I don't believe it's worked as well as people thought, with the limited number of exempt positions, to look at less than 1% for a city of this size is really limiting in the ability to appoint people and process, and then not to go to the extreme of maybe 15 or 20%, but certainly less than 1%, I think is really an unnecessary prohibition in the city. So that's something I'd ask you to look at.
All right. If there's no objection to sending it back to committee, does anybody object to that? Ms. Hahn wants to speak for the first time.
Right. Everything you said is fine, but that still, nothing that you have said today or nothing we've discussed today in any way changes the fact that we, as a city council, still have the authority with 10 votes to overturn the mayor's firing or hiring of a general manager. So again, let's not forget, yes, they're at-will, but the city charter makes it very clear that the checks and balances afforded us is our ability to overturn the mayor's firing of general managers. So just because they're at-will, and I think we all need to always remember that, that that's our authority, that's our power, and one of these days, we're going to have enough courage to do that, no offense to anybody who's sitting in the mayor's office, but you know, we were on the city charter, and one of the big issues was this firing of a general manager that is new this time around in the city charter. In the old days, the general manager needed to be fired with the approval of the city council, and when we changed that in the city charter, a lot of the former council members were very mad because they said that takes away the general manager's neediness for council members. We'll never get our phone calls returned from a general manager. We'll never have them report to us, because they used to report to 15 bosses and the mayor. So just because the charter says the mayor can fire a general manager, again, one of these days, we're going to have enough courage to veto that action, and by that one action on this floor, general managers from here into eternity will remember that the council is important, that we do have authority, and that, in fact, they do still also report to us. But until we have the courage to do that, they're, you know, going to feel like the only person they answer to is the mayor of Los Angeles. So just reminding us that nothing you said today in any way changes the fact that that is the power, that is the checks and balances that this charter has given to the city council.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reyes.
In your discussion, I'm hoping that as you go through committee, one of the questions I have is the ability to establish performance standards. For example, if the council puts forth a policy goal that directors, department heads now have to demonstrate the ability to hire young people, youth, through apprenticeship programs, given the budgets they have, the ability to meet those performance standards. How we implement those policies, how does that get reviewed? Do we have a chance to even assess or assert concern or will in terms of their priorities and as they perform as directors? I'm hoping that is something we can engage in committee so that our performance standards of what we see as a body, sort of priority for the city, are actually being implemented. Is that something that we could focus on? Is that a dynamic that we could have some influence in, or is it more just as a result of the direct relationship between the mayor and the director?
Well, it is a dynamic process. First of all, as council member Hahn points out, because you have the inherent body to reverse a removal of a general manager that has some implied power, but I think even without exercising that power in a particular case, depending on the circumstances, if it is established that a certain general manager has the confidence of a large majority of the city council, it might influence a mayor not to initiate the removal of that general manager. It's pretty difficult to contemplate a situation where you would set very specific standards because those are standards that would come and go with each council member and each city council, but again, because you have the power of oversight, you have the ability to interact with general managers, express your preferences, express your preferences through the budget, explain what you believe to be important priorities for a particular department. And frankly, because there is a council role, even in the revised charter in terms of removal, I would think that every single general manager would be pretty concerned about maintaining a cordial and professional and frankly, a very satisfactory relationship with as many council members as possible.
The formal management relationship is between the general manager and the mayor. However, speaking as a general manager, I can assure you that I pay very close attention to each and every one of your requests. So I think that because you do have the final authority over the budget, a general manager who doesn't return your calls is playing a real dangerous game.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Anybody else wishing to be heard? If not, let's refer that back to committee if there's no objection to that, to Personnel Committee. Okay. All right. The next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
If we could reconsider...we're going to reconsider two items, folks. There was a lot of people for public comment who were not able to come in because of the protest that was here, so I'd like to reopen public comment if there's no objection and see if any of these folks are here. Nader Tashakko? Nader here? If not, Zuma Dogg?
Yes.
Okay. Zuma, come forward. You have two minutes right there at the main microphone, right there, and we'll have a clock.
Here we go.
Okay, Mr. Dogg. Okay, Mr. Dog.
All right now, my name's Zuma Dog, representing Venice Beach, California. You feel me? Now, I'm an artist. I'm representing all the artists of Venice. Now, we got Shea Butter Man Ratcha. He's been arrested twenty-three times for selling Shea butter, and he's been in front of the court that many times. And the judge says, hey, man, I don't want to see you anymore. You're allowed to make a living. I don't want to stop you from making a living. And we got Mr. Rosendahl over here, who also does not want to prevent people from making a living. So the thing is, they're writing tickets for $1 incense out there on Venice Beach. You're not allowed to sell incense. You're not allowed to sell jewelry. I make my own t-shirts, y'all. Check it out. I'm Zuma Dog, a performing artist, y'all, a gangster rapper and whatnot. I sell my own shirts. They say I can't sell my own shirts no more. They're trying to strip away everything off of Venice Beach. It makes it Venice Beach. It ain't Manhattan Beach. It ain't supposed to be the Third Street promenade neither, y'all. So meanwhile, I was out there on Venice with my camera. I'm a public advocate for real, though. I'm a public advocate. I got a TV show that runs off through LA, Two Million Homes, you feel me? And so we had about ten police cars, shiny vehicles, man, blinged out, like pimped out, like pimp my ride vehicles, ten of them, plus all the officers. And we got this on footage of five people arresting somebody for selling $1 incense. So meanwhile, try calling 911 when all ten law enforcement agents are sitting there writing a ticket, putting a man in handcuffs for selling Shea butter, after the judge says they don't want to see him no more. Try calling 911. Well, they can't come to your neighborhood. The whole LAPD's down writing tickets, making sure I don't sell my own t-shirt. And then besides that, hey, man, you want to buy some meth? You want to buy some crack? It's all going down because you got all the units of the LAPD sitting there writing tickets for $1 incense. So anyway, what we'd like to do is be able to continue our First Amendment freedom of speech. They're harassing, we got this guy right here, they threw, they arrested him because he was wearing a Speedo. Now, sure, you might not, it might not be very attractive watching a man with his nutsack in a Speedo, y'all, but it shouldn't be against the law, y'all. It's Venice Beach. It ain't Manhattan Beach. Zuma Dog, public advocate for real, though, you feel me? I represent millions of viewers. Yeah.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dog. Our next speaker, Dele Alamein. Is Dele here? Michael Carrion?
Yes, my name's Michael Carrion. I live in the Fourteenth District, and I'm hearing the same subject. Mr. Weisar, I hear you talk about accountability more often than I did before. So does the mayor, yet your office can't return the call. Who's accountable for the people who work for you? The mayor and I had a conversation while he was councilman, and he said he would take care of it. Quote, "When there's a problem, I bite the bullet. I admit when I wrong. I make mistakes, I promptly admit." Well, he's been wrong about a tree that fell down, but where is he? Did he change his mind, or is he just lying to us again? The mayor wants to take over the Board of Education. The federal government wants to take over the LAPD. If the mayor can't get the LAPD's act together and the Board of Education, then they should both give them up. Let the board, the mayor, take over the Board of Education, and since the mayor's so busy with the Board of Education, not paying attention to LAPD, let the federal government take care of the LAPD. I've got one more comment, and that is with the District Attorney's Office. They fought and argued and everything with the farm workers, yet the district attorney farms out most of their work. They're the biggest farmers in the city. They don't take care of their business. They farm it out to a private contractor, and the private contractors, we pay for that. Yet somebody's trying to do right, and somebody's trying to plant some flowers and bullshit and food, and you guys don't, you guys sneakily sell the property from underneath them. Okay? Someone told me, or someone stated, that the South Central Farmers' children don't set their hopes up high enough. Their ambitions aren't high enough. I asked that person, why aren't they mayor? Why aren't they governor? Why aren't they the president? They seem to think they're God, but they're not. The South Central Farmers, if you guys listened, all these children are in school, all these children are getting good grades, and all these children are going to college. Okay? It's a safe haven that we don't have enough of. But the city council, again, like Ms. Hahn said, does not have the courage, the courage to stand up to you people and do, do the right thing. All I'm asking for is the right thing here. Your tree fell on a car, you turn your back, you hide under a loophole. We did not know. The mayor knew when he was councilman. But he dropped the ball. He did not pass the buck. He did not put it in writing. So now the city is not accountable.
Thank you, sir.
Like always.
Appreciate it.
Find some courage.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Matthew Dowd, and then Willie Turner.
Thank you very much. My name's Matt Dowd. I'm representing artists of Venice Beach. These are very real people who are getting shut down and getting arrested, carried away. Shocked, look, on, you know, onlookers on the beach, can't believe that people are getting arrested and carried away. We all signed a contract with the city. They issued us a permit to do what we do. Everything we do is, is, is right there in the, in the contract, and, and now you've passed a law that says our contract's invalid and we have to sign a new contract. We, you know, Venice is different, and I'm telling you that from an outsider view. It's not Santa Monica. It's not Manhattan Beach. Thousands of people from all over the state go there for the variety. They go for the freestyle nature. If they want to go to a shopping mall, they'll, you know, to buy shopping mall equipment. This new ordinance they've brought out, you know, you know what it says, this nominal utility thing? Basically, it means you're allowed to sell useless things with nominal utility only. See? Now, that's, that's the law. We were down there the other day, and you're allowed to sell a boat made of wood with sails on it, because they're like, oh, well, it doesn't do anything, so you're allowed to sell that. And I'm like, what's the communication? Where's the communication in a boat? Whereas if you're, if you're commun, if you're selling something religious, or something that communicates by ear, or by sight, or by nose, whatever it is, incense falls into that category. Music falls into that category. But now it's getting to the ridiculous, where you've got resources, you know, valuable resources getting wasted. I've seen it. They're arresting guys for, you know, people for indecent exposure for wearing a Speedo at the beach. I've seen them write tickets for people being a foot over their little white line. Okay? I got a ticket, again, for selling incense now. That's two. So we're, you know, we'll see you, everyone, in court. It's
Thank you.
City money.
Appreciate your testimony. Willie Turner is our last speaker for public comment. Welcome, Mr. Turner.
All right. God bless. I know y'all want to go to lunch. But anyway, everything falls into play. I don't want to be selfish in our country. We're all losing our rights, our freedoms, our jobs are being outsourced, the unions are being busted. And for my immigration and my Hispanic brothers and sisters, we're all part, they're part of this country. They build, they clean up. You just can't kick people out after you sold them houses and gave them the illusion that they can come here and be free. So when I grew up in Compton, they had Spanish, they had white. I was born in downtown LA, matter of fact, on Hope Street, 1961, at John Wesley Hospital. But anyway, Venice, we're fighting for our rights and freedom. I was, anyway, I do the snake show. I'm the snake man. I have a Tarzan outfit. I'm covered in a front. It wasn't the cops. The cops said, hey, but they're setting us up. Some tourist came by and said, I don't like your outfit. And while the cops were arresting, they had twenty cops on him. And then one of the terror card ladies, they told her her breasts, breasts are like hanging out. They wrote her a ticket for indecent exposure. Then they came to my show. They made a citizen, or, or a plant, pressed charges against me. But the cops said, you can still perform. You're okay. Now I have to go to court. Then that night, they came with flashlights, Officer Prudnham and Curtis. They said, hey, see, I'm a traveling person. I have a camper. I do shows all over. So they came and said, oh, you're lodging in your van. We're going to arrest you. I was arrested. I just got out of jail with him yesterday. I was arrested, and plus, they took my van and piled my van right after the morning of the ticket that night. And I'm a political artist. So my van is, has a big peace sign, and it says, Bush lied and many died. So God bless you all.
Thank you.
So anyway, citizens of the world, I command you. We must all stand up and stand for our rights, or we're going to be squashed by the globalization and outsourcing and the tanks of colonialism.
Thank you. Good use of every second, sir. Appreciate your testimony here today. And we want to now close public comment. And if we can reconsider item number five, colleagues, if you can open the roll on reconsideration of five, and close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And Mr. McQuiston, if you'd like to give your comments at this, this time, why don't you come forward if there's no objection for one comment card? Yeah, Mr. Cardenas?
Yes, at the appropriate time, I'd like to, as a courtesy to Council District 14, if we could have a reconsider, reconsideration of item seven. There's a public comment card on item seven.
Seven, we'll do the same thing right after.
Open a public comment for that one comment.
Thank you. Mr. McQuiston?
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. I was interrupted by the commotion, so we didn't get very well connected this morning. The problem with item five was that the write-up, the report, did not match what the committee decided. Unfortunately, it's a little garbled, and what is going to happen is the parking permit area is only surrounding a park, and instead of restricting the hours around the park so that people can use the park, the wrong hours were put into the ordinance. So it is really a hash right now. The other problem with it is that we have a larger area that we cover, and one, this is in our area. And our larger area, we have insisted that the daytime parking be separated from the nighttime parking, so people who don't want to restrict nighttime parking can choose the daytime parking period, if they want. And unfortunately, it was not put into the DOT report because we were not informed at the proper time. Fifteen people decided that they wanted to restrict all of the apartment users so that they could not park on the street at night. We really have more apartment people in the area than we have other people, and we do want to have them have the option on their block of actually having daytime parking restriction. The DOT report actually said that there is no problem at night. The only problem is in the daytime, and it's not a serious problem, although they did permit the parking permit area to be established. And we don't contest that. But we do think that there should be amendment to say that there should be daytime parking, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, two hours, as an option that people can select if they want according, and leave the other hours in. But the actual report areas have to be corrected so that the map agrees with the words in the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. McQuiston. And folks, we'll indulge me from the chair. I did do my due diligence on this since we spoke last, Mr. McQuiston, and this is not set in stone. So we will see how, how it's working and, and consider many of the comments you made, and see if we can't square the map and the description as well. So appreciate your testimony. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this one? If not, please prepare the roll on this again, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. That's, that is approved. And if we can reconsider number seven, please open the roll on reconsideration, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that is before us. And if there's no objection, Victoria Torres and Teresa Marquez, if you'd like to come forward to speak now. Now's your time to, to give public comment if you'd like, for two minutes. Victoria Torres and Teresa Marquez, would you like to speak? Welcome to City Council. You have two minutes.
Good morning, City Council. I'd like to address the issue on the Huider and Lorena accident that happened. As all you know, that Boyle Heights is really affected with all these freeways going through it. And it's very unfair that the residents that live there have to put up with all the traffic that's going through there, eighteen-wheelers. And the accident that happened, this is not the first accident on Lorena Boulevard. These semi trucks go 45 miles an hour. There's three schools on that street. I'm sure you wouldn't want to have it in your area. Boyle Heights has been dissected with all these freeways, and I think more attention needs to go to Boyle Heights and making these streets safer for us, for the people that live there, and also updating all the stop signs and the lights that need to have left-hand turns. I hope that you would, you know, give more attention to the Boyle Heights area on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Marquez?
Yes. I'm speaking in regards to Boyle Heights, too. Boyle Heights is residential mainly, and we have a lot of more pedestrians than any other area, I believe. And I live there. But in the last few years, we've had an amount, a high amount of trucks, big trucks, semis, driving through our streets. They drive through our residence. They try, they drive through our streets, and our streets are not big enough for them, to accommodate them. They take out the poles, they take out the corners, and there's a lot of accidents because of the rigs, the big rigs. Even to get off the freeway for the big rigs, they're constantly tearing down everything else on their way to get off the freeway. So we need more help there. And I, I just urge you to look at that and help Jose Weisar with all our issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gruhl?
I just wanted to thank the speakers who just talked about this item, Lorena and Huider.
Hold on one second, Ms. Gruhl. Excuse, excuse me, Madam. Ms. Gru, the council member is addressing your comments, if you'd like to listen to them. The council member is addressing your comments right now. Councilmember Gruhl is addressing the comments you made.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you for being here today, and I know Mr. Weisar and his staff that are there would also want to take a moment to thank you for coming down here. I think Mr. Weisar took a tragedy and made something to actually improve not only that intersection, but intersections across the city, and having us look at some of those dangerous intersections where there are a large amount of truck traffic, where there needs to be some increased communication. And so I wanted to stand up as well and acknowledge you for being here, and for Mr. Weisar, for his leadership on this issue. And it's going to set, I think, a, a path for us to address some of the other really dangerous intersections across the city. So thank you for being here today, and thank, a special thank you to Mr. Weisar for his leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you. I also wanted to thank you for coming down and to say I certainly had that same issue in Wilmington, where these giant semis were driving through residential neighborhoods, doing just what you said, running into poles. The actual sign that said, no trucks allowed on this street, they actually crashed into that sign. But you'll know that this city council did one thing that was in our power to do, and that was to increase the fines and penalties when these truck drivers are cited for driving on residential streets. It was only a $50 fine in the past, which many of them scoffed at and felt like it was part of doing business. So this city council actually increased that fine to go as high as $250. So we just want to remind LAPD, we want to remind our, the Highway Patrol, that we want them to enforce the laws that are on the streets. We want them to cite these large vehicles, particularly when they endanger public safety in residential neighborhoods, to cite them. And we know that we have the backing of a higher fine to maybe make them take notice that it really is a serious issue.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Let's open the roll on this item again. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That item is approved. We have one last public speaker card. Mr. Hunt, if you'd like to come forward. Michael Hunt?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm the victim that they've been talking about been arrested twenty-three times for selling Shea butter. It carries the First Amendment to my religion and to my heritage. The thing I can't understand, a $100 ticket, go to jail, go to a jury trial for $40,000 for a $100 ticket. That's something that the federal law has already approved, and I can't see why my council guy is not addressing the issue. Why is he having LAPD arrest people for working and not robbing and stealing and having all these resources that, that it costs the police, probably $500 to arrest me, another $1,000 to house me. And then the judge, here's what the judge is going to tell him. The judge said, well, you can't take away his livelihood, as long as he got the proper permit. I got the proper permit. Now they still want to take away my livelihood. It's a catch-22 here. I work, I feed my family, I take care of my business. It all comes out of the same resources. But yet, I'm still being arrested for taking care of my child, for paying my bills, for doing something, doing doing something, doing the American dream. Please help me understand this.
Thank you. Close the public comment. Next order of business.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those motions are posted and referred.
The excuses on the desk, Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused Wednesday, April 5th for city business. That meets council policy.
Okay, Mr. Weiss is excused.
Councilmember Weston requests to be excused Wednesday, April 5th for city business. A motion is required.
Okay, Mr. Reyes moves, and Ms. Perry seconds. If there's no objection, excused.
Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused Tuesday, April 11th to leave at noon for personal business. That meets council policy.
Okay, Mr. Padilla is excused.
Councilmember Rosendahl requests to be excused Tuesday, April 18th to leave at 11:30 for personal business. A motion is required.
Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Reyes seconds. If there's no objection, Mr. Rosendahl is excused.
And that clears the desk.
Okay. Any announcements, colleagues? Mr. Parks?
Mr. President, before we get to that, could I have number nine forthwith?
Sure, let's send number nine forthwith.
I'd like, also on announcements, just to make sure everybody's aware that on Thursday, one of our icons in the 8th District, Mamie Clayton, is going to be subject of a panel discussion at the Huntington Library in San Marino as it relates to her accumulation of the largest black movie and book collection in the world. And so, that's on Thursday, April 6th at 7:30 at the San Marino Library. Also, in the 8th District, on Saturday, August, Saturday, April 8th, 10:30 to 1:00, there will be an FBI and a multicultural advisory committee meeting at the Epic Center at Exposition Park at 3980 South Menlo. And then also, on Saturday, August 8th, at the Rose Bowl, will be a group that really has worked closely with the 8th District dealing with youth health, and they basically, the California Public Health Week, which is co-sponsored by the KNBC, and that will be at the Rose Bowl. They expect over 10,000 people there. Also, on Sunday, April 9th, LAPD will be putting on a recruitment drive and car show in La Mert Park. It starts at 9:00 a.m. They'll be providing the written exam, it's free admission, also the enjoyment of participating in the auto show. And then also, the African-American Chamber on April 11th, Tuesday, they're having their open meeting, and it will be held at their offices at 3910 West Martin Luther King Drive, Room 209. And their guest speaker this week will be the California State Senator Joe Dunn from the 34th Senate District. And then finally, on Sunday, April 9th at 1:00, a small school in the 8th District is having their end-of-football scrimmage. So, a team that's going for their third out of the last four years for a national championship at 1:00 Sunday. The USC Trojans will be having their scrimmage. So, anyone interested, gates open at 10:00 at the Coliseum.
Yes, Mr. Reyes.
Yes, I just wanted to rise and congratulate our athletic director from UCLA for putting together such a great, great performance. I'm with Coach Holland and the team Bruins for reaching a national championship. We came a little short, but given a team that overcame incredible odds, injuries, showed great courage and character to reach the final two is an accomplishment. So, I want to congratulate them and acknowledge all the performance, and just my hat goes off to them. Good and gold.
And rumors have that that CD1 team, the Dodgers, came mightily close to a big comeback yesterday as well, so.
11-10 on opening day, not too bad.
21 runs ain't bad. All right, Mr. Zine?
If Councilwoman LeBons was here, he'd be announcing this today, so in his favor.
The 5th Day of Spring?
No, Tom LeBons, I mean, he's the historian, and I know other pressing matters, but today, April 4th, 1850, a very important day, and that's the day Los Angeles was incorporated. This was sent to me by one of Wendy Gruel's champions in the community, Louise Clark Stone. And the city was incorporated in 1850, today, April 4th. Mr. City Attorney, I'm sure you knew that.
I did. I forgot it since then.
There you go. You forgot it since then.
He was actually here to help incorporate.
[laughing]
And for all the folks who are watching at home, the City Council's first anniversary was July 1st of that same year. So, this year, we're going to look to have a City Council Day that will bring in all the former City Council members, as Mr. Padilla did a couple of years ago, and to mark that day as well. Mr. Padilla?
Just as a reminder, colleagues, upcoming meetings of the Joint Commission on ALASD Governance, this Thursday, the commissioners will meet at their regular time and location, starting at 4:00 p.m. at the Metropolitan Water District Boardroom. And then this Saturday, the next, in the ongoing outreach meetings throughout the school district area. They're coming to the San Fernando Valley, starting at, I believe, 10:00 at Bird Middle School in Sun Valley. Come on out, chime in, improving our public schools.
And this Friday, colleagues, I will just remind everybody, we will be meeting at Van Nuys City Hall for our regularly scheduled 10:00 meeting. That'll be the first of our monthly meetings at the Van Nuys City Hall, that is this Friday, the 7th of April. One week later, we will be in recess for Good Friday on that following Friday, so make a note of that as well, that we will be in recess for that day. Mr. Cardness?
A couple of announcements. Thank you, Council President Garcetti. Just wanted to thank all the people who came out on Sunday for the 13th Annual Cesar Chavez March. We lost Cesar Chavez in the flesh 13 years ago, but he's here in spirit, and it was wonderful to see hundreds and hundreds of young people there learning what it is to be nonviolent and learning what it is to stand up for what you believe in. Also, I also wanted to congratulate the Persian community for having another tremendous, tremendous Persian festival, No Ruz, in the San Fernando Valley, and there was well over 30,000 people there. We don't have the final count, but it's growing every year. And as I was telling my colleague, Councilmember Gruel, it was really wonderful to see. With 30,000 people, might get a little messy, you know, parking gets a little tough, but they're learning. But when you get right down to it, there were no incidents. So, once again, it was wonderful to see that festival of spring and that festival of No Ruz, and just reminding people that Los Angeles is a wonderful place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements, colleagues? Does anybody have any adjourning motions? If I can, please ask everybody in chambers to rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, Mr. President, John Hague died on March 29th after a brief illness. Perhaps no one except Abbott Kenny had more impact on present-day Venice than John. He and his wife Anne were the proprietors of the Venice West Cafe, where beat poets came to read. The Venice West was shut down by the police because it didn't have a cabaret license. John organized marches, pickets, and delegations for the rights of poets and free speech activists. He was a founder of the Venice Corps, that's the Congress of Racial Equality, and picketed for integration. This was the beginning of Venice activism. In the late '60s, he was founder of the Venice Peace and Freedom Party and the Free Venice Beachhead, which is a newspaper. He led Venice to oppose turning the canals into yacht harbor and running a freeway through the middle of Venice. He was also a founder with Rick Davidson of the Free Venice Movement, which asserts our rights as a community to be free. In the '70s, '80s, and '90s, he was active in the Venice Town Council. John, quiet leadership over several decades, was instrumental in shaping today's unique Venice culture. In recent years, he's been retired from political activity because of declining health. He did emerge occasionally to conduct forums on community activism and the history of Venice. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I'd like to say a few words, and I think Ms. Gruel wanted to join in on this adjourning motion in memory of Albert C. Martin Jr., who was part of a three-generation Los Angeles architectural firm that has been at the center of the city's commercial and cultural development for a century, and he died at the age of 92 on Thursday. This year marks the 100th anniversary of what is now called AC Martin Partners Incorporated. The firm launched by Martin's father, Albert C. Martin Sr. The family architectural firm has had a profound effect on shaping the Los Angeles skyline. Some of the landmarks designed by Senior Martin early in the 20th century are the Million Dollar Theater on Broadway, St. Vincent de Paul Roman Catholic Church on Figaroa Street, May Company Department Store, which was then on Wilshire Boulevard. Senior Martin also collaborated with John Austin, John and Donald Parkinson, and Austin Whittlesley in the design of Los Angeles City Hall in 1928. Six decades later, Albert Martin Jr. served as chairman of the board, directors of Project Restore, citywide nonprofit group, helping to raise funds for the restoration of City Hall's Main Street lobby, the reinstallation of the Lindbergh Beacon, and other significant parts of the rehabilitation of our 27-story building we call home, which was completed here in 2002. And I might ask Ms. Gruel if she wants to take--
Ms. Gruel?
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Appropriately, Ms. Perry, to do that, in acknowledgement, when you read the obituary today in the Los Angeles Times, you saw quite a history this family has had here in Los Angeles. And you look at our skyline, you look at, excuse me, this building that we're in today, and that they have had a profound impact. And the nice thing is that they continued their family business so that we could have all of that passed down, and Chris Martin and his nephew, who has been chair of the Chamber of Commerce for the last year. And so, I think it is an icon of our city that we've lost today, but someone who has made an impact and helped us, I think, recreate downtown. So, I just wanted to join Ms. Perry in acknowledging AC Martin. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dorothy, sons, Charles, and David, daughters, Mary and Claire, 10 grandchildren and nine great-grandchildren. A memorial service is scheduled for 11:00 a.m. this coming Saturday at St. Basil's Catholic Church, 3611 Wilshire Boulevard in Los Angeles.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I asked the council adjourned, and the name was Shirley Galetti. Shirley was the wife of Cam Galetti, who, for 60 years, they were a great partner team in the community. Over those years, the two of them co-chaired the San Fernando Valley fundraising for the American Cancer Society, over decades raised millions of dollars for American Cancer Society. They worked very hard on the North Valley YMCA, and Cam was selected as a Golden Book Award winner, which was the Lifetime Achievement Award, and Shirley participated in the YMCA for many years there. She was kind of the grand dam of the Dennis Park area, which is now known as Mission Hills in the San Fernando Valley, and helped the naming of Mission Hills. For all those who work with us in the community, she is greatly missed. She was a lovely lady, a real trooper, a hard worker for the Valley and the community. And she was survived by her husband, Cam, of 60 years' marriage. Also, her sons and daughters, Ronald, Michael, Jeffrey, and Linda, and 10 grandchildren and five great-grandchildren.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zine?
Mr. President, Thomas Richard Dussay passed away March 31st. Los Angeles Police Officer, serial number 36489, passed away on March 31st in Palmdale, California, as a result of an off-duty motorcycle collision. Officer Dussay was 27 years of age, born July 18th, 1978, in Washington State, raised in Bellevue, Washington, put into the Los Angeles Police Department August 26, 2002, and was assigned to West Travis Division. He'll be greatly missed by his family and friends, and survived by his mother, Sharon, and father, Chris, wife, Sharice, son, Aiden, three brothers and two sisters. Los Angeles Police Officer Thomas Richard Dussay. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Other adjourning motions, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Los Angeles City Council will be in recess until tomorrow, which is April 5th, 10:00 a.m. here in downtown City Council Chambers, John Farrar, room of City Council. Thank you very much, and this meeting of Los Angeles City Council is adjourned.